Good evening, everyone. I would like to call the Lindop School District 92 Regular Board Meeting to Order at 5:30 PM. May I have a roll call, please, Ms. Suarez?
Yes, yes. Board Member Jordan Harret?
Present.
Board Member Arrington?
Present.
Board Member Griffin?
Present.
Board Member Dawson? Board Member Hannah?
Absent.
Board Member Taylor?
Present.
Board Member Williams Wolford?
Absent.
Thank you.
All right, I think I missed my name. President Brian Dawson.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You can be seated if you're standing. At this time, we're gonna pause for a moment of silence. And at this time is, I think our families, our city, our state, our nation, we just have a moment of silence for all of those that are impacted by COVID-19. Thank you very much. We're gonna move right along on Spotlight on Success. It's for the sixth grade class.
Yes, good evening, everyone. I would like to introduce the Spotlight on Success today. We have sixth grade. And let me just tell you a little bit about how we ask people to come and present. Based upon the observations that are being done by the administration, we go in and if we see something really exciting that we think the board should really be aware of, we just go out and we happen to see Ms. Hankins' class and these amazing sixth graders. You'll hear from them in just a moment. But just sit back, relax, and enjoy the information about the King Tut mystery. Ms. Hankins.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Ms. Hankins. I'm the sixth grade ELA and social studies teacher. So in sixth grade, we are doing a travel unit where we are learning about different places around the world. And our first stop was Egypt. So we did learning about the pharaohs and pyramids and all that. This activity was one that we almost didn't do because of time, but my students came to me and were talking so much about King Tut and all their theories that they had. So we did this assignment and our students Emily and Joseph will now go into more detail about what they did and their thoughts on this assignment.
In sixth grade, we are traveling the world and exploring places. Our first stop was Egypt. We did a group activity together to investigate King Tut's death. We read case files and answered questions that helped us figure out what happened. There are a lot of different theories about King Tut. The first case file was about A who was very jealous and thought that King Tut lacked experience. The second case file was about King Tut possibly dying from malaria. The third case file explained the theory of King Tut dying from a chariot race.
My favorite part of the lesson was the mysteries. It was my favorite part because I did not know why he died. I did not know what was gonna happen next. I learned that King Tut probably died from a fall and was ran over by a high-speed chariot. It was easy to make connections with the King Tut case files and our virtual password. They were both on pharaohs in Egypt. Next up, our field trip to Egypt. Who's paying?
Emily and Joseph, would you like to share what your thoughts on the theories were?
I think he fell off the chariot when he was racing on it because of his bone condition, malaria.
I think his overall health has something to do with him dying.
Are there any questions?
Are there any questions from any board members? There are none. Thank you all very much for being here tonight and for that great presentation, Ms. Emily and Mr. Joseph, as well as Ms. Hankins. We so appreciate you being here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening. Okay, we'll move along to public comments. Are there any public comments at all, Ms. Suarez?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Griffin, upcoming events and correspondence? Should we have any correspondence? Do we have any correspondence, Ms. Suarez?
No, ma'am.
Okay. So that means we'll just read the upcoming events on your own, please. Now, if you notice, Ms.'s Christmas break will be here soon then later. Okay. We'll move right along to the consent agenda. Can I need a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
This is Board Member Vicki Arrington. Vice President of Board Member Vicki Arrington. I make a motion that the board approve the consent agenda, including payroll for October 21st, 2020, through November 17th, 2020, in the amount of $411,043.49. The activity account reconciliation for October 2020 accounts payable for October 21st, 2020, through November 17th of 2020, and in the amount of $209,593.10. The first read of press plus 104 adopted as presented by ISB with district edits, and the disposal of the obsolete and unrepairable technology.
Can I have a second, please?
Board Member Brian Dawson, I second.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Are there any questions, any discussion on those consent agenda items? Okay, if there are no questions or any comments, need a roll call, please, Ms. Suarez?
Board Member Arrington?
Yay.
Board Member Griffin?
Yay.
Board Member Dawson?
Yay.
Board Member Taylor?
Yay.
Board Member Williams Wolford?
Yay.
Board Member Jordan Harret?
Yay.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Moving on to the new business. Need a recommendation to approve the regular open session meeting minutes for October 20th, 2020?
This is Board Member Brian Dawson. I'd like to recommend the approval of the regular open session meeting minutes for October 20th, 2020.
And a second, please?
Cheryl Griffin, I second.
Any corrections, any discussion? If there are none, roll call, please.
Thank you. Board Member Griffin?
Yay.
Board Member Dawson?
Yay.
Board Member Hannah, I saw you arrive. Board Member Taylor?
I abstain. I wasn't present due to work.
Board Member Williams Wolford?
Yay.
Board Member Jordan Harret?
Yay.
Board Member Arrington?
Yay.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Need a motion to approve the closed session, please?
This is Cheryl Griffin. I make a motion that the board approve the regular closed session meeting minutes for October 20th, 2020.
And a second, please?
I second. Vicki Arrington.
Any corrections, any discussion at all? There are none? Roll call, please, Ms. Suarez?
Board Member Dawson?
Yay.
Board Member Hannah?
Yay.
Board Member Taylor?
I abstain due to work-related issues with my job.
Board Member Williams Wolford?
I abstain.
Board Member Jordan Harret?
Yay.
Board Member Arrington?
Yay.
Board Member Griffin?
Yay.
Thank you.
Motion carries. I need a motion to approve and accept the resignation, please?
The closure of the district office?
Yeah, I think you skipped. Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Thank you so much, Ms. Arrington. So I do need approval for the approval for the closure of the district. Thank you.
So I'll make that motion, Vicki Arrington. Make a motion that the board approve to close the district office on December 23rd through December 30th of 2020.
And a second, please?
Cheryl Griffin, I second.
Any discussion from board members or questions?
Tanya Taylor, Board Member, just want to reiterate that said, December 23rd and December 30th, not through.
Thank you.
No worries. Thank you.
Any further discussion, questions? Okay.
So wait, question. So did she accidentally send the motion through? Is that what you're saying?
No, no. The motion is "and". That's the motion.
Is that the way she read it?
No, she read it as "through". So it was corrected. Do you want to redo the?
I'll reread the motion. I make a motion that the board approve to close the district office on December 23rd, 2020, and December 30th, 2020.
And a second, please?
I second. Board Member Tanya Taylor?
Okay, any questions, other comments? Roll call, please, Ms. Suarez?
Board Member Dawson?
Yay.
Board Member Hannah?
Yay.
Board Member Taylor?
Yay.
Board Member Williams Wolford?
Yay.
Board Member Jordan Harret?
Yay.
Board Member Arrington?
Yay.
Board Member Griffin?
Yay.
Thank you.
I'm kinda glad Ms. Arrington stopped me from making this motion because I do want to say if anybody has any questions about this next motion, we can have a closed session. But this was the only item that would have been on closed session, so we decided to just present it. But I need a recommendation to approve and accept the resignation, please?
Board Member Tanya Taylor, I make the recommended motion, I make a motion that the board approve and accept paraprofessional Ms. Beverly Edwards' resignation on December 31st, 2020.
And a second, please?
Cheryl Griffin, I second.
Okay. Roll call, please?
Are you calling for questions?
Yes, we can have questions. I know we really can't talk about personnel.
I know. It's just a general question. Did I miss the exit interview information? Because I didn't see it in board books. Is there any exit information, exit survey information available?
She didn't lead to the 30th.
We don't have that yet. She will not resign until her last day is December 31st. That will be her official date. And so we will get that from her. We have already sent her the information.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
And then there'll be a personnel update, a staff update, by the way, Dr. Jackson will give a little bit later. So that'll be something also that'll answer some questions in this area. Roll call, please, Ms. Suarez?
Board Member Hannah?
Yay.
Board Member Taylor?
Yay.
Board Member Williams Wolford?
Yay.
Board Member Jordan Harret?
Yay.
Board Member Arrington?
Yay.
Board Member Griffin?
Yay.
Board Member Dawson?
Yay.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Moving along to old business, discussion on Stephen Hunter, Stephen Hunter Life Skills and Basketball Training Program. That's Dr. Jackson.
Yes, good evening again, Board of Education, all administrators and community members. And last month, the board agreed that Mr. Hunter could be paid for his sessions with the children working on Focus Fridays. However, what did not come first was really sort of how we came about this. I remember in December 2019 that we were talking about having an AAU team. Mr. Hunter did say that he was going to come. He wanted it to be for Lindop students and that he would cover all of the costs for that. Of course, after we had that conversation, we had, well, this was in December 2018. But of course, after that, we went into, we had COVID in that March, and so that those plans were kind of halted. But our journey with Stephen Hunter really began back in the spring, summer of 2019. Dr. Spalding was looking for some different ways to engage our students in STEAM and also become exposed. And she found an opportunity through WASD. That program has been implemented into Lindop. And in fact, we had the most students that we had had in several years, in fact, 125 students. But to offset the costs, an application for a grant was completed and approved through the Stephen Hunter Foundation. And so the total program costs were $49,500. The youth foundation support was approved and awarded in the amount of $19,800, and Lindop's commitment was $29,700. As I said before, the first implementation was summer 2019 with 125 students participating, the most that we have had in several years. Next slide, please? So our journey with the Stephen Hunter Foundation, go ahead. In summer 2020, Dr. Betts reapplied for a grant through WASD for STEAM to offset district's costs once again of $38,580. An application was completed. The Stephen Hunter Foundation did award Lindop $15,432. The district's portion of that was $23,148. And this summer, summer 2020, we had 115 students participating. Next slide. As I talked about, December 2019, when we talked about the AAU opportunity, Stephen Hunter has a lot of connections in Chicago in which he runs his AAU teams. He wanted to bring it out to Broadview. Typically, there would have been grants through the city of Chicago, which would allow full sponsorship for our children. But of course, in spring 2020, COVID-19 came about. The sports practice and gatherings were discontinued. Funding was also discontinued from the city of Chicago. Conversations began in the summer and fall of 2020 about to determine how we might be able to continue opportunities for our children and the exposure, since we knew that COVID would not allow us to participate in activities as we normally would. Stephen Hunter agreed to facilitate sessions with students during Focus Fridays in collaboration with Coach Nichols and Coach Champion. We knew that board approval would be required. Mr. Hunter agreed to begin the sessions for the children, and he began those in September. We also had conversations that it had to be approved by the board, and he knew that and was still willing to go ahead and provide this opportunity for children. And so in October, this was presented to the board, and it was voted upon. Next slide. So how does it fit? It fits with fitness and training for interested students in grade levels K through 8, life skills and consistent reinforcement based upon realistic data to have a Plan B, college and career readiness aspirations. Right now, currently, we have 50 students participating with options for additional students to join. And I do believe that Mr. Nichols is here. Ms. Suarez, if you can let him in?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, Mr. Nichols, can you just talk a little bit about how the sessions go?
For sure, yeah. So I just want to say hello to everybody and thanks for having me. Nice to be here. Wish I could see everybody, though. I'll let that go. So we, on a daily, on a weekly basis, we welcome Stephen Hunter via Zoom. Typically, we do a little pre-game talk and what's gonna happen, and then we start letting the students come in. And there's a warm-up that goes through, so he's been bringing calisthetics as part of his routine so that kids know that they get a proper stretch and warm-up before you get right into the basketball part. And also part of the warm-up, he brings like kind of a word of the day, a word of the day. So that's the life skills piece. So he'll have accountability and talk about accountability a little bit, get into the stretching and go through that. And then at the same time, he'll get into the drills. So there's skills and drills that he does that he wants the students to take with them and work on it every day. So that was kind of his message, like it's not just today, once a week. Make sure you do these skills and drills throughout every day, you know? So then at the end, he kind of closes it up and does a little cooldown while he talks to them again about the life skill portion. So if it's accountability, he'll all wrap it up in the accountability. And then we sign off. Kids do a little Q and A when they feel like, it looks like, you know, they want to ask some questions, we do a little Q and A. And then we wrap it up, and a lot of times, we just do a post-talk with Coach Hunter and myself, Coach Champion. But that's about it. It's been very successful. It's been fun, something to look forward, I think, for the kids on Fridays. And we're continuing to try to get the word out there that this is something that we can all be a part of.
Thank you so much, Mr. Nichols. Next slide, please? So, fall 2020, we looked for the actual funding for this. He did tell us what it would cost. The purpose, and we looked at federal Title I. It was a huge loss for us, losing out the connection or the collaboration with Chicago. And so the purpose of Title I funding is to provide children significant opportunity to receive a fair, equitable, and high-quality education and to close educational achievement gaps. So historically, the use of funds has been for Title I is to pay outside vendors or consultants to provide professional development, training, the teachers, staff, and administration. Some of the consultants that we've used before has been CEC. We use a data consultant and intervision. But also, Title I pays for consultants to provide supplemental education services to students to address the achievement gap, social, emotional well-being, and college and career readiness. Next slide. So if we look at our COVID-19 shifts in spending, our allotment for 2019, 2020 was $143,841. And so the last school year, the breakdown was as follows. CEC, that's Consortium for Educational Change, there was $36,000. College Mentoring Experience, also known as CME, was $25,000. Intervision International, $22,500. And it was broken up between Title I and Title IV. The data consultant was $24,900, and connection consultants, which is our literacy consultant, was $19,600. For the current year, our federal funding allotment is $130,777. CEC, $12,000. And if you just look, everyone was allotted about $12,000. However, we do see three that are not listed, that were previous listed our prior year. Intervision International, not applicable. College Mentoring Experience, not applicable. And connection consultants. And that was just because the need was not there during this remote time, or it could be handled in-house. And so the data consultants, CEC, $12,000, it doesn't mean that they will spend the $12,000, but we thought that that was a sufficient amount to provide for them. Broken down a little further, Stephen Hunter Foundation, $12,000, September 2020 through December 2020. So the sessions would come up to $7,000. We did purchase the basketballs, which came up to $405.60, and the cones, which were $141.27. The $7,000, the program will be concluded on December 11th of this year. Next slide. Here is just a video, some things that they have been doing in class, just some quick clips so you can just take a look at and see what the children have been experiencing.
Everybody grab a ball, all right? Just get behind. We're gonna go through a ball handling warm-up that I like to teach on a daily basis, okay? So here we go. Right here, underneath the basket. All we're gonna do, we're gonna go clean cross, all the way down, all right? We're gonna come back. Here, for clean cross, clean cross, clean cross, clean cross, clean cross, clean cross, all the way down. All right, let me see somebody do it. Start underneath the basket, dribble up with your left hand, and let's work on right foot, left hand layup. Ready? There. And, go! Hold that there. You're gonna put the ball in your right hand. All right, use these drills every single day, all right? We meet once a week right now. That's not enough, all right? When you're a basketball player, you want to be a basketball player, it's called habits, something you have to do every single day. Okay, so make sure you take these drills we did today, and let's focus on trying to master them every single day, all right? Left hand, use your off-hand, okay? Because eventually, guys are gonna get caught on to your strong hand, so we need to be able to use both hands, okay? Everybody, great job today. Great job today. Last thing, what are we talking about? Integrity, okay? Integrity. Always have integrity, okay? When you think no one's watching, they are. Make sure you're doing the right thing when no one's around. You wake up, you do things the right way, you treat people the right way, you talk to people the right way. And no one has to tell you that. That's just the way we are. Have integrity about yourself, all right? You guys have a great weekend.
Thank you. Any questions?
Are there any questions from any board members?
Oh, Dr., this is Vicki Arrington, Board Member. So there's 50 students that are enrolled on these Fridays that this is occurring?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and they conclude on whatever the last Friday is in December?
The 11th of December.
Okay, and it will go, is it going forward?
No, this concludes the time with Coach Hunter. And so there will be about 7,000 of the 12,000 expended. And so there will be about seven thousand of the twelve thousand expended.
Now, this is Brian Dawson. Are, are you saying that we would have the five thousand that we wouldn't have to spend? That, that money's coming back, or is it being put into a, a different program?
It's just a part of the Title I funds and anything that we would need as far as programming or professional development for our children or for teachers, then that's what we would use it for.
Uh, but we only spent, of the, the twelve thousand that we voted on last month, you're saying we only ended up spending seven thousand for his fee, and then the other five hundred and fifty for basketballs and cones? Is that, is that right?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay, okay.
And Superintendent Jackson, are you saying the basketballs went to the students?
Yes, they did. They have the cones as well as the basketball.
Okay.
Any additional questions?
This is Tanya, board member Tanya Taylor. I just want to say, great efforts, great job. It gives the students something else to look forward to during this pandemic. They have something else to do. So I thought that the program and the idea and just seeing it in perspective, seeing it in the presentation this evening, was an awesome idea. Shouts out to you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Any other comments from board members? Thank you very much, Dr. Jackson, as well as Coach Nichols. Thank you. I think you're up. Discussion on re-entry plan for 2020, 2021. Yes, and so we've been having and talking with staff as well as our parents and just going over some data. And so for our re-entry plan, all of us have been hearing about the new numbers. And in fact, Cook County has put on a thirty-day watch for Chicago. But all in dining is going to be closed as far as DuPage was, happened last month, Chicago, and all of those begin on yesterday. So we just have a little data to share with you, because we've been talking about this, but we had not had an opportunity to share the full data. So we'd like to begin, and now I will have Nurse James.
Hi, everyone. I want to say thank you to the Board of Education and Lindup Administration for having me tonight, as well as all Lindup staff and community members that are here tonight. This is the same presentation, similar to what I've been presenting at re-entry meetings and parent coffees and everything. Also similar to what I presented back at the board meeting in July when we were also discussing this, except this time around, the data is a lot more alarming, unfortunately. So first, I just wanted to give a breakdown of how COVID is over the entire country. If you take a look at this map here, this is straight from CDC's website. This map shows the number of cases reported to the CDC over the past seven days. So if you take a look at each of the different states, the darker the color, the more cases have been reported. So the darker shades of blue, you can see right there in the Midwest. These are the states right now that have the highest number of cases being reported. Whereas if you look at Maine and some states on the East Coast, those are right now having lesser cases of COVID reported. So right now, if you take a look at Illinois, we're in that second to darkest shade of blue. So we're still up in that really high category, as well as all of the states immediately surrounding us. And just overall nationwide, almost all fifty states are experiencing a rising cases currently. Next slide, please. Thank you. This is breaking it down further to just looking at Illinois. So like I said, that Illinois is that second to darkest shade of blue. A large amount of the cases that are being reported now are traced back to where people are attending large gatherings, where restrictions aren't adhered to, people aren't wearing masks, they're not distancing, not keeping their hands clean. So unfortunately, with that, the amount of cases that we're seeing now is already exceeding numbers from this spring, which is really unfortunate. And along with positivity rate and case numbers being reported, it's really important to look at hospitalization rates as well as death rates. And unfortunately, when we look at hospitalization and death rates, those are what are called a lagging indicator. So that means that as we see a sustained increase in the cases being reported, we're gonna start to see those hospitalizations and deaths increase as well, which is really, really sad. So right now, they're trying really, really hard to not overrun or overwhelm the hospitals and the healthcare systems right now. And like Dr. Jackson had mentioned, beginning yesterday, Chicago and suburban Cook County were placed under a stay-at-home advisory, which is different than a stay-at-home order. So this really can't be enforced, but it's, they really just encourage people to do this for the well-being of others. And then this was announced, actually, just a couple hours ago today, beginning on Friday, November twentieth. Although Illinois is going to stay in Phase Four, Tier Three mitigations are being implemented. So some of these, this is not the complete list. This is just what I could fit on the slide. But gaming and casinos are gonna close, theaters and museums close, indoor group recreational activities are prohibited. No personal care services, where masks cannot be worn, can't go through. So if you, you know, get a beard trim or a facial or something like that, you wouldn't be able to get those. And grocery stores and pharmacies can operate at fifty percent capacity. I do have the link on the slide at the very bottom here, but after I'm finished speaking, I can put the link into the chat, so you can see the full list of the Tier Three mitigations. Okay, this slide here is showing school-specific metrics that school districts look at to see how community transmission is going. Unfortunately, this is from IDPH's website, and they only update it every two weeks or so. So this is the most up-to-date information on the IDPH's website for the school metrics. So I took out all the numbers that were in the boxes here, because I think it might be a little difficult to read. But this is from November first through November seventh. So the test positivity rate in Cook County is twelve point nine percent, which is, which shows a substantial risk of infection. There's really no magic number for a good threshold for a low risk of community transmission, but they want our target at less than five percent. Along with that, the new cases per a hundred thousand people works out to be four hundred and sixty-five. The target is less than fifty. The new cases for this particular week was eleven thousand, four hundred and ninety-seven. That was showing that they were increasing. And the target here would be to just be either decreasing or stable. The most alarming one from this week was the youth case increase, which was one thousand, two hundred and fifty, which is also an increase from the previous weeks. And that target, we also want to be decreasing or stable. And they say that the youth cases are actually expected to be higher than what's reported here. Because a lot of parents and guardians just kind of, they say, oh, you know, he has allergies, it's just his asthma, it's a sinus infection. So they're expecting that that number should actually be a lot higher. Further, if we look at Cook County, this here just shows these specific numbers. This is updated today. Excuse me. So Cook County right now accounts for almost forty-four percent of the state's COVID cases. So this includes the city of Chicago, which is heavily populated, as well as the surrounding suburban town, excuse me, surrounding suburban towns as well. And as I said, beginning this past Monday, we are under a stay-at-home advisory, as well as on Friday, November twentieth, we're gonna be in those Tier Three mitigations as well. And if you take a look at just the colors, kind of how the country was laid out with the states, as you can see, we're in the darkest red right now. And all the counties surrounding us are in that, immediately surrounding us are in that darkest shade of red as well. Okay, if we take a look and break it down further to Broadview, this data is also updated as of today. Broadview's current rolling seven-day average positivity rate is nineteen point twelve percent. I also have the website where I pulled this from. I can also put that in the chat, as they update this every single day. So they take the, the average from the day before and just compound it with the new cases that are being reported. If you look all the way to the left side of the screen and that red box at the bottom, that shows that there has been a hundred and one, a hundred and sixty-one percent increase in confirmed cases over the past fourteen days, which is another really alarming statistic. It's also really important to look at what, what it looks like in the towns that are surrounding Broadview. And as you can see, Bellwood, Forest Park, Hillside, LaGrange Park, Maywood, and Westchester are all above that a hundred percent change in cases being reported. I did want to talk a little bit about adaptive pause. This is seen when, so schools that went to in-person learning or a hybrid model, they have to pivot back to full remote learning for a set number of weeks if they have an outbreak in the school or heightened transmission. So all students that are participating in the in-person or hybrid model would have to transition back to the full remote learning model until the district deemed that it was safe to return to school. So while most schools around us remain closed, some have gradually opened for in-person learning. Some of the open schools have already been forced to take an adaptive pause approach within the last few weeks. And they've had to transition all of their students that they've had back in school back to remote learning. So this has become more common, just as the months have gone on. Right around us, there's Hillside and Pace actually recently fully closed its buildings, not even letting any staff in as of, I think, last week or the week before. And as you can see on here, Hillside had to go back full remote, Oak Park River Forest, Naperville, Plainfield, Crystal Lake, and Elmhurst Community School District. So there have been a bunch of schools that have tried to come back in and do the hybrid remote, or hybrid in-person model, but they've already had to go back to the full remote learning model. I did want to put in here just my little soapbox that I go on. I made it down to one slide, but just please, everyone, continue to keep your hands clean, wear your mask, and socially distance. Science has proven and proven again that all of these are effective measures in mitigating the spread of COVID-19. And most, not most importantly, but very importantly, get your flu shot unless you're unable to. Ideally, you're supposed to get it before the end of October, but any time is okay. This is so important this year, because while it doesn't protect against COVID, while the COVID vaccine is still in the works, it'll decrease the likelihood of, you know, you contracting the most common strains of flu and having to be hospitalized for it, or having to go out and seek medical care for it. So as I mentioned before, the hospitals right now are trying really hard not to be overwhelmed or overrun. So getting your flu shot will help for that not to happen, because it's likely that both the flu and COVID will be spreading at the same time. So just please keep in mind to keep your hands clean, wear your mask, distance, and get your flu shot.
Thank you, Nurse James. Next slide. Now, for the staff re-entry survey results, and we've had a little bit of time to discuss some of the data. This is DeGraff. You're up.
Thank you, Board of Education, Administration, and then the staff members and any community members that are in attendance. I do appreciate being given the chance to present the staff data. We always value our input being heard. This data is representative of seventy-seven employees, so not just LTA, but I am speaking on the whole group, which included TA members, LSASAM members, administration, non-Lindop employees, and some of our staff members who are not part of either union. So this is representative of the large Lindop family. With the question, which of the learning modules do you feel will be best for your family situation during COVID-19? Seventy-seven point six-three percent preferred the remote learning model. Twenty-two point four percent preferred the on-campus learning model. Next slide. If school physically reopens in the winter of twenty twenty-one, and the students are learning on campus, are you comfortable returning to work? Fifty-four point six-seven percent of our staff said no, while forty-five point three-three percent said yes. Next slide. If school were to physically reopen, would you have childcare available for your own children? And I will focus you in on the two gray components. Twenty percent of people who had children said they would have daycare available. Thirteen point three-three percent said they would not have daycare available, and the large blue section are for people that the situation is not applicable. Next slide. We posed the question, if a staff member who had a child would be able to bring the child to work, would if that make it more easily able for that staff member to attend work? And again, I will point you to the gray section. Sixteen percent of the staff with children said, yes, that would be beneficial, and sixteen percent of staff said that would not make it more easily available to come to campus. Next slide. When posed the question, if the staff member was considered high-risk or an increased risk for COVID, thirty-two point eight-four percent said yes, while sixty-seven point one-six percent said no. Next slide. We also asked a question about family or friends, or people we may come in contact with who are considered high-risk or increased risk for COVID. And this thirty percent said no, and seventy, close to seventy percent said yes. Next slide. We also asked the question of any people that we are in our family or we are friends with that have tested positive, been hospitalized, or passed away due to COVID or COVID complications. Seventy-one, fortunately, seventy-one percent said no, that was not part of their current situation. While very sadly, twenty-eight point three-six percent said they were impacted in this way. Next slide. And I will pass the parent re-entry survey results and the presentation to Dr. Spalding. Oh, actually, were there any questions prior to?
We will let moving on.
Okay, sorry. Okay, Dr. Spalding, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Graff, and thank you, Dr. Jackson. Good evening to everyone, and thank you also for the opportunity to share the parent survey results with you this evening. As you know, on Saturday, November the seventh, we shared the following information with our families. There were nearly ninety participants, and overall, we received very positive feedback and appreciation about us involving our parents and then sharing the results of the parent survey. For the families that were unable to attend, the slides and the video of this information was also shared on our Dojo page and a private Facebook page. To put the survey results in context, we want you to know that we received three hundred and sixty-eight responses to the survey, and that sixteen point eight percent of our families did not reply to the survey. The parameters that were there was the only response per, per student. So if a family had three students enrolled at Lindop, they could complete the survey three times. So one instance for every student. Nearly split equally, just more than fifty percent of our families are not willing to send their student back to school after winter break if we were in person, and forty-nine percent are willing to send their student back after winter break. Next slide. This slide will show you that parents were only able to select one answer for this question. And overwhelmingly, nearly thirty-eight percent of our parents responded that their child was ready to go back to school, and that's why they were willing to send them. Another eighteen percent specifically indicated that their students really need, their needs and their learning styles would better be supported via in-person instruction. And then another fifteen percent identified that their students' needs and desire for really face-to-face interaction with their peers or their friends is what determined that they felt their students should return after winter break. Next slide. Okay, for those parents unwilling to send their students back to school for any in-person learning after winter break, nearly seventy-three percent indicated that presently, they just do not feel that it is safe for their student to return to school. And additional twenty-two percent reported that they do not feel that their child would be able to abide by all of the safety guidelines for any in-person learning. Next slide. Our survey also sought to ascertain the amount of risk that students might be encountering in their non-school environments. So we're glad to learn that nearly eighty-four percent of our students reportedly do not live with anyone who works in a high-risk exposure environment. However, sixteen percent of our students reportedly live with someone who works in a high-risk COVID environment. And this would include people who work in the healthcare industry, morgue workers, anyone who is in medical transport or just exposed to known or suspected COVID-19 patients or the bodies, unfortunately, of people who have or have been suspected of having COVID at their time of death. We have sixteen percent of our families do work in those high-risk situations. Next slide. We asked a question about increased risk. So more than eighty-six percent of our students are not considered high or increased risk for COVID, and nearly fourteen percent are. Next slide. More than thirty-one percent of our families indicated that they have family or friends with whom they have frequent contact with, of whom are considered high or increased risk for COVID. Happily, nearly sixty-nine percent do not. Next slide. And then finally, our parents reported that thirteen percent of them have family members or friends who have tested positive or have been hospitalized or passed away due to COVID-19. But these results were collected during the data window from October seventeenth to October the twenty-eighth. And needless to say, that data is continually changing. So I'm going to ask Nurse James to chime in real quickly to provide updated in terms of what she's learned about families in our school community over the last couple of weeks, because this data represents a closing date of October twenty-eighth.
Thank you, Dr. Spalding. Yeah, if I could just chime in really quick. Since November ninth, we've received report of eight families from Lindop who have either had a household member or multiple members diagnosed with COVID or have pending results at this time. So since this was, this was reported after the survey closed, this data right here might not be exactly accurate. We'd have to add those, you know, eight families into there. But that really is indicative of the climbing positivity rate in Broadview as well.
Thank you, Nurse James. Thank you, Board of Education.
Thank you. Dr. Jackson, does that conclude the?
Reentry. So as Nurse James has stated, we are being driven by the data. And right now, Broadview's current rolling seven-day average is nineteen point twelve percent, which is extremely high. Next slide, please. Something to consider. This is a quote of a veteran at an emergency school board meeting. Says, "A veteran just stood up and said, 'The ghosts of people I've killed to keep you all safe haunt me every night. Are you prepared to be haunted by the ghosts of the children and faculty for whom you are responsible?'" And when I heard this, it is so relevant to where we are now and how are you going to deal with the decisions that you make? And so I just think that we have to make sure that all of our decisions are based upon making sure that everyone is healthy and safe. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Are there any comments from any of the Board of Education members?
Yes, good evening. This is Tanya Taylor, Board Member. I just want to say that I feel so confident in a decision, that decisions that we have made thus far in keeping the school closed. We know that science dictates this pandemic, and we all keeping that in mind, that we want not only the children of the community safe, but all the children in every community safe. So I just want to say that personally, I am so excited that we made the decision to keep the school closed. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is Dr. Griffin. I would like to echo that sentiment, but also include the fact that not only are we keeping our children and their parents safe, but we're also protecting our staff, which is just as important.
Thank you, Ms. Griffin. Any other comments?
Yeah, our Board Member Hannah, I second that, Ms. Griffin. Not only are we keeping our students safe, but also our staff members. Our staff members are important, and their families as well. So I am also glad that we did make the decision to keep Lindop closed.
That I would make, this is Vicki Arrington. I actually would like to thank each of you. Nurse James, my goodness. I'm imagining that a year ago, you would never have seen yourself. And as far as your nurse duties, doing what you're doing, actually, none of you. So I want to thank you for all the labor and the hard work that you're putting in as a result of this COVID-19, each of you.
Thank you, Ms. Arrington.
This is Board Member Williams Wilford. I'm very grateful to be a part of a board that continue to have a leadership. They use data to drive our decisions, and based on the data, the superintendent recommended that we go remote. And it sounds like that we'll continue to be remote for a while until we get these numbers under control, you know, every person. We have to do our fair share to help, you know? Stay home so we can save lives, keep your mask on, and all that good stuff. So that hopefully this too shall pass sooner rather than later.
And this is Carla Joiner here, and I do want to make a comment. When I see the statistics in Broadview, I'm blown away to see that one of five, one of five, you know, people are testing positive for COVID. It's unbelievable. I want to ask Nurse James, Nurse James, what was the, do you remember what the positivity rate was, maybe the thirty-first of this month?
Around the thirty-first on Halloween, it was around eleven percent.
I'm going to tell, the reason why I ask that is because our community, and I know people are getting, it's just so hard to stay confined, you know? And I know it's hard to keep the young, our young, our students confined, especially when they, the weather was so beautiful around that time, when, you know, when the Halloween was here during that time. It was, I think it was pretty nice during that time, it was nice enough. But they had an activity at the Park District, and I just happened to drive by. And they had, it was great participation, but I can remember seeing kids on a tractor, just like thirty of them, just piled together. And I really saw very few masks, if any. And the whole, and all I thought about was, in two weeks, we're going to see the evidence of this. And, and I'll tell you this, I definitely thank you for the data. And like Miss Penny said, this first thing I was thinking about was getting data to drive our decisions as a district. And you help our, help the board make great decisions too, so you make it easy for us that way. But I hope that we always just communicate to our students just how important it is to shelter in place as much as they can, not socialize as much with their peers, because they're going to bring it back to their parents and their older, you know, grandparents. But that's all I wanted to say. I just, I did actually talk to the mayor about that. She evidenced that she was there during the event too. I drove around, I didn't get out. But again, I echo everyone's sentiments. Thank you all for making it easy for this board to make good decisions.
Okay. If that concludes that portion of, we'll move right along to staff update. Dr. Jackson?
Yes, good evening again. And so our staff update is currently, we have an eighth-grade vacancy. The administration, specifically Dr. Spalding, working along with the rest of the administrators and as well as the union, they were able to do some amazing things so that we were not short-staffed and so just sort of moving people around. And that has been significant, I think, in our success during this remote season. So we have the eighth-grade vacancy out. We also have three peer professionals, one of which you heard that is resigning on the thirty-first of December. They are currently, when I say they, the administrators are currently reviewing applications now. And we do have several in under review. We have approximately twenty-one total applicants that are under review now from Indeed, one from AppleTrack, which is our software that we use. And that's for peer professionals. For the eighth grade, we have two from Indeed and one from AppleTrack. And so they will be making the decisions, and we will begin, they will begin to screen the participants, and then we will set up interviews. Are there any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson. Our last item on O Business is a discussion on district strategic plan. I'll allow Ms. Williams Wilford to lead this again. She is the one that requested that this be placed on the agenda. Go right ahead, Ms. Williams Wilford.
So good evening, Board Members. I asked for this to be put on the agenda because currently, we don't have a written strategic plan in place. And I just feel like we're doing the superintendent and the leadership a disservice by not moving forward with this. I know when it came up, maybe two years ago, it was election time. And so we kind of wondered about spending that money and that effort when potentially the board could change over. But yes, it's an election time again, but it's only three of us that's up. Four board members will still be in place. So I just really urge us to think a little bit harder about this and move forward with this. This would be the ideal time because we have four board members that will be staying aboard. And regardless, you know, hopefully, people maintain their seats. If not, you'll still have four board members that could still drive that and move forward with that along with whoever comes aboard. But I just feel like, you know, we're kind of like a ship out at sea with no direction without a strategic plan. And yes, it's in the middle of a pandemic, but people are doing a lot of things virtually. And including school districts, we're moving forward with strategic plans. So it was up for discussion and just to see how everyone felt about it, as well as the superintendent.
I do want to read just the definition of the strategic plan, just for the new board members that, or the board members that may not be familiar with it. What is, what is strategic planning? Strategic planning is a process where the stakeholder groups in an organization participate in articulating a vision of desired future and a blueprint for attaining that future. Is defined focusing on the next three to five years. Generally, it articulates a shared mission and purpose, creates a framework to guide decision-making, develop organizational effectiveness and commitment, a foundation for fundraising. That's, that's also a component if the board chooses. A tool to monitor performance. It determines school priorities. It forms the basis of a headboard evaluation, builds energy and momentum, analyzes critical issues, inform finances and projections. And it actually improves greater accountability regarding the district. I do want to say that I know Dr. Jackson and I probably, we met with, was that CEC, Dr. Jackson, right before?
Yes, it was CEC.
And we, we presented it to the board. And at that time, the Board of Education did not want to do it at that time. And, and we all agreed that, you know, it wasn't just, it was just in front of, before an election. We knew we still have board members who had wisdom about a strategic plan. But it was really important for everyone to get accustomed and have some knowledge about the position that they hold. Some education kind of helps you be able to make decisions better when you have some information about what your role is. And I think that was another reason why that we deferred it, you know, and I supported that. Now, we're at a situation that's so undefined. We do, we're definitely going to have a, an election. We have new board members, although they definitely are people that, our board members have been great about participating in everything they could, although this has been a time that we haven't been able to do a lot of conferencing. You know, so they probably had less than many of our board members because of COVID-19. You know, Penny, I think a lot of board members aren't doing strategic plans unless they already have them because everything is so undefined regarding everything. So I'm not going to, I have more comments, but I'll allow someone else to communicate regarding our strategic planning right now.
Can I add one other part? That when I look at our numbers in terms of the number of students who's reading at an above-grade level, and I think about, we don't have a strategic, strategic plan to guide us and move us forward with that. That's really alarming, like, I think it's like seventy-one percent of our students aren't reading at grade level or above. And as a board, I feel like that's our role to put something in place to help guide the superintendent and her team to move forward with that. How do we close that gap? Because each year, it's eighth graders that's graduating. So out of every ten, seven of them are going on to high schools unprepared, potentially. That's a lot.
How does a strategic plan in place, especially right now when we're doing? Everybody's remote and we're losing quite a bit. Right now, we are. The question is, you know, we do projections, and these projections are based on somewhat reality-based projections. Right now, we're so undefined, we literally don't know when we're going to be back in school. But hopefully, the fall, we'll go back. Hopefully, the summer, we'll start recovering. Hopefully, people will, you know, the vaccine is, is, we're just talking about a vaccine. I just think that, I don't know, I definitely think we need a strategic plan, you know that. I just think that this would eat up a lot of our three to five-year plan if we do this now. I can see us deferring it a year before we get on a better foot, or we can have people. You and I are probably the only ones here who participated in a strategic plan. And that was all stakeholders coming together. And it was such a great event, having everybody in that gym and everybody being part of the strategic plan actively involved. It was a great event. And I know that we can do things remotely. And I know, I don't know, my thoughts are, I'm, I'm, I don't know how a strategic plan can, can drive it better than what we're doing now because I think we're just trying our best to do whatever we can to stay alive in this pandemic and give the kids as much as we can. It seems like that's what our teachers are doing, our administrators are doing, they're really pushing. I think that, you know, it costs money as well, and that doesn't mean that's not a bad thing. But you really want to effectively utilize your money because we're going to eat up a year of it trying to figure out when we're coming back to school. That's just my comment. Any other board members, please?
Yeah, I'm curious what other board members will have to say as well as the superintendent.
Yep. Yep.
Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead, I'm sorry, Ms. Arlington.
Um, I'm processing it in my head, cause I personally have never participated in a strategic plan. I am, I kind of lean towards maybe deferring it a little bit because of the environment that we're in. Um, as far as the reading level, it's like the whole state is at that point. The whole state of Illinois is a, is like, seventy percent of students aren't at the reading level at, at large. And I, I certainly concur with the uh, the need for it. It, I might, my uh, I don't know what, I don't wanna say hesitance. I'm just feeling that the timing of it, uh, given this environment that, that we're in, wouldn't produce uh what we would ultimately need to have once we, if we even go back to a normal setting.
This is Dr. Jackson and um I'm excited about the possibilities of going into this strategic plan. It's something that we've been talking about. Uh, my hesitance would only be um the amount or what you lose when you're not uh face-to-face and being able to meet like that. However, I have heard of districts that are uh planning uh remotely now and um working in fact with uh West Forty. I have not seen with uh CEC. Uh, maybe we would consider just seeing how that process has been going, if anyone has done it in remote, to sort of give us some data uh to go by. Because of course, the people who would be facilitating this will say go, no matter whether we're remote or in person. But I'd like to hear from some districts that are currently in this uh process during this time to make a better informed decision.
Ms. Williams-Wolfer, do you know of other um districts that are undertaking this currently?
Yeah, I've um heard that West Forty is working with a lot of local districts to guide them um in their strategic plans. So West Forty would be more um, you know, available to expound upon which districts they're working with.
And I can find out about CEC, who they're working with now.
Any comments from any other board members?
Good evening, this is board member Tanya Taylor. My sentiments are exactly um the same as Ms. Arlington's and Dr. Jackson. I think with the um stress of what's going on as far as the pandemic, not to put it on pause, Ms. Williams-Wolfer, but just to see how West Forty is handling strategically other districts at this time. And then maybe we can piggyback off of some of that information. But I also think it's important, I do agree, we should have a strategic plan in place. I just think the timing of it at the moment is a little stressful. That's just my two cents. Thanks.
All right, this is board member Brian Dawson. I am also a person who has, hasn't done a, a strategic plan, but just as the explanation was given from the president, I would say that it's needed. I am a board member on another board and I can tell you that a lack of a strategic plan will leave you in a situation where things languish, fall through the cracks. And then, you know, when things happen, people don't know exactly how best to handle it. And I think that sometimes, and I know it is extremely difficult right now. It's sometimes when you're in a time of crisis is when you need to do your best thinking. Uh, it is easier to kick the can and just say, let's wait. But, you know, I'll, I almost feel like, you know, you can wait because there's always a reason not to. You know, and I, I don't know what year it was that you did the last strategic plan. Um, uh, but it was probably something going on then, you know what I mean? Probably some issue or a school shooting or something, which might have been difficult. But a, and I don't know if it's possible to do um a hybrid, you know, strategic plan or, or start on it where we're doing certain aspects that strictly are in regard to academic growth or strictly in regards to um uh teacher PD or whatever we feel is gonna give us the most bang for our buck. But I think if we, if we say that we're gonna do nothing, it's easier to always have something on the back burner where, you know, um i- it's always a reason not to do it. As far as money, i- i- you know, if it's very expensive, you know, I'm, I'm pretty frugal on that, that end. But I know we just spent seven thousand to watch Stephen Hunter dribble a basketball. So I know we got a low money. So I would say that we should, at, at least, uh, and, and I'm hearing people saying we should at least kind of look into it and see what the possibilities are and what other people are doing. Because I do believe that we need it and it's at a time when, you know, you are at your most uh critical that you need to make critical decisions. And if we come out of this and continue to be reactive instead of proactive, we're, we're doing our, our children and teachers and administrators and community a disservice because we'll constantly be kind of just waiting on the next shoe to drop. And so I, I am, I mean, in a way, I'm agreeing with everyone where everyone said is like, it's important. But I would probably be even more of like, what can we do? If we can't do a, a full strategic plan, is there something we can do so that we start looking forward and saying, how can we, you know, get our ducks in a row now? Because once the kids go back to school, we might be hitting the ground running, trying to make up so much ground that without a plan, you know, everybody's rowing, but maybe in different directions. So that's all I would say.
Any other comments from Ms. Griffin? Or Mr. Hannah?
All right, it's board member Hannah. Uh, so my only question would be, um, when's the last time we had a district strategic plan?
Penny, probably, you know, in other words, the last time we had a strategic plan was probably in two thousand and six. Don't you think that was it, Penny?
I think it was either six or seven, Dr. Carlson.
Yeah, it was two thousand and seven, because we, I got here in two thousand and six and you did too, Penny. And that li- next year, you know, we, we participated in a, matter of fact, it was right when we first got here, so it had been two, two thousand and six. Um, and that doesn't mean that, yeah, of, of course, I don't even think, there was so much about that strategic plan that was difficult. It was difficult because, you remember Penny? It was a difficult strategic plan because you really have to be on the same page. Administrative team, superintendent in your board have to definitely be on one accord and wanna put this forward. I think at that time, things were pretty split. So I, I don't know if you remember Penny, so I'm not even sure if we even actualize it once we spent, we spent a, we spent quite a bit of money for that. And that doesn't mean it's not worth it, it is absolutely, um, which is, we know it's, it's definitely worth it. Um, but one thing we hadn't done, which they're not doing a lot of, is that board retreat. That's also gives us goals and guides our, our district. We hadn't done that recently because everything was kind of on pause. But that's also another way to kind of get the board in a direction as well, that you can do quickly in preparation for the strategic plan. Um, but Ms., Ms. Griffin? Ms. Griffin there? This, um, can anybody see Ms. Griffin, is she still there?
She is still here, her, her uh picture's still go, visible, she's still in the room. She might be having um audio problems.
You unmute, you unmute, Ms. Griffin? Okay.
Or, or maybe put it in the chat if you're trying to speak and, and can't for some reason.
Okay, let me look at the chat, there might be something in there. So I think it, it sounds like we still wanna explore. I think Dr. Jackson had a great idea as well, you know, and, you know, to just kind of see what other place people are doing through CEC or the other one that you said, what was the other one?
West Forty.
West Forty. Does that sound like something, does that sound like something the board would like to do, just get information about? Is that, that, that might be a great way to start?
I say the more information, the better. Uh, and I don't know what the rule is for a board retreat. I, I know we had one, you know.
We generally have it every year, this year was a little bit, they weren't really doing a whole lot because they found out, um, you know, they were just cutting everything down to an hour, things were kind of crazy with ISB. And I think they're doing more like, what did I tell you before, Dr. Jackson, they were doing, they were doing, um, oh my goodness.
ISB?
Yeah, well, tell me the other, there was something else that they were doing, um, oh, board self-evaluation.
Yes.
That's, that's exactly what we, they were doing. They, they found out that sometimes having the board retreats, uh, things, anything longer than an hour had been difficult. You know, but that doesn't mean, I think they're fine tuning things now anyway. Um, I think things are, I think they're trying to adapt because this is going longer and they had, something has to be done too. So.
Yes, and the one saving grace, if I can just time in, is that we do have a school improvement plan. Um, CEC uh did come in and work with us, but uh Dr. Spalding led that charge and developed committees and had input from all of us as a team uh to get that going because we know that we did need something. Uh, we aligned it to pillars, there are uh internal structures that have already uh been developed and are uh just working along, but that's at the school improvement level. And so there's not a lot of heavy lifting, if I can add, because I know that schooling, not school improvement, but for strategic planning, it is an extremely heavy lift.
And I think what motivated, we went to that last um conference in Ms. Arrington, the last time we did with uh, or Dr. Jackson. You remember the one we did, uh, we went to in, was it Vegas? No, I can't think of where it was.
Ami, oh, the Cube Conference?
Yes, the Cube Conference.
In Miami.
Uh huh, and strategic plan was just something that drove everything. And the great thing about it is that, I mean, and, and I think we were just, felt like it was something that was missing, you know, from our, our not having that direction. And then, of course, it was something that the board that thought it wasn't good at that time. Um, I know we can't wait forever, but one good thing about it, we do have good leadership here and they have, um, just like I said, the school improvement plan. Uh, one thing about Mr. Dawson, I, I hope, when I think about Pace, part of their issue is leadership, period. You know?
Oh, I, I never said any school, I, I never said Pace, you said Pace.
Yeah, but you did mention that, but I'm saying that, but part of it is, you know, the leadership we have here, which is definitely been driving things, but I know we as a board have to drive it, so I agree too. Any comments, any, any thoughts? I think that Dr. Jackson communicated she would get some data from CEC as well as West Forty. Does everybody agree with that?
Yes.
Okay, yep.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Jackson, can you do that for the board?
I absolutely will.
Okay, and we'll have another discussion on this in December.
Yes, ma'am, no problem.
Sounds good. Any other thoughts? Board self-evaluation? Any thoughts about that? Is that something, when we talked about in the past, is that something that we want to do at this point? Okay.
I, I think all the, the data we can get, you know, the better and, and as much as we can get ourselves aligned and in alignment. Uh, I think you said earlier that there was, uh, I don't know, people were going in different directions, maybe on the board. If we align ourselves, then when it's time for us to do a strategic plan, it might be less difficult, maybe you think? I, yeah, I don't know, this is my first time, so I'm guessing.
Well, I'll tell you, it was, it was a very divided situation years back, you know, and, and it was, um, I think at that time, there was a probably division between the, the, the top leadership. You know, I'll say that rather than getting in, in, in mentioning everything that happened in the past. I was new, brand new, so I really, um, I can remember being a board member and that was probably the first thing we did. I didn't have a clue what was going on, I really didn't. So I, I felt like I wished that I knew a bit more so I could really be a better asset. That's what I was thinking, I didn't know what was going on. So I, I would have appreciated a little bit more time to at least understand my role. I didn't have a clue. So it was very intense at that time. I don't think we, we didn't spend a whole lot of money, Penny, did we? Or did, no, I take that back, you remember Penny?
The money came in with more so, um, because of course, when you do something like this, you want buy-in from the staff. And so I think, if I'm not mistaken, how it worked was any staff that wanted to partake in it, they were welcome to come. And I wanna say it was either one or two Saturdays, something like that, four days. And so I think we spent like maybe fifteen thousand dollars on staff. And um, I don't know, I mean, of course, we hit like breakfast and a lunch for everybody. It was like buffet style or whatever, and then the facilitators, but um.
And the facilitators, we, we paid a fee for that. So that, that whole event may have been about twenty-five grand or something like that because we did pay for teachers to be there during that entire event, which was well worth it, of course.
It's normal to, to have staff, cause you want them to have the buy-in, you want them to have their voice to be heard throughout the process. Because of course, they're there every day, like we're from the outside looking in, you know?
Community members, by the way, also that we committed to come in as well.
Yeah, we did, community members.
Parents, some parents were there, of course, all of the board members were there.
Yep, and you try to get like your realtors and just a variety of stakeholders in the community to, to be a part of it at that time. That's what Dr. Carlson tried to get, so that way when they're selling homes, they're more connected to it. And people from the Rotary Club and just the variety of people, I can't remember who it was, the mayor at the time, no, the mayor didn't come, I remember, no.
It was.
But I think it probably would be different now.
Yeah, and, and I'll tell you this, and, and because of that feel and that, all the effort to bring all the people in, I just think it's, it, and I know online will be great, you know, and I'm, I'm sorry, great, it'll be, it's all we have. I just know how impactful a strategic plan is. And because of all you said, and just, I think people would be looking forward to get now. That's me, we shouldn't do it. I just know just how impactful it was to have everybody be a part of it. It really was impactful. Um, it was a big event and I'm hoping you get the buy-in, get the bang for the buck. Not like throwing it down a hill, it's that you wanna impact the money you spend on it. Uh, you wanna be good stewards, but you also wanna have the buy-in to be able to have a good product, that's all.
Yeah, I agree. And then, you know, of course, there's other ways you can do that too, like afterwards, after the strategic plan is put together, you know, Dr. J can always, um, you know, take that time out to meet with those stakeholders and realtors and different people in the community to share out, this is our strategic plan and, and so on and so forth. So that that way, realtors and key stakeholders such as that would be fully aware of what Lundup is doing, you know?
I think that's great, but the great thing about this strategic plan was they were all a part of that whole process. They had a voice in it too, not necessarily the realtors, but, cause I don't remember them being there necessarily, but the mayor, the police, uh,
The mayor at the time, the mayor didn't participate. That was Henry.
It was a representative there, wasn't it? It may not have been the mayor, but it was a representative from the, his department. But it was Henry Vicencic, wasn't it? And it was somebody there that represented, that was from that trustee board. It may not have been Henry. Or Mayor Vicencic, I'll say. But it was somebody representing, uh, as I think one of the trustees were there. I can't remember who, but I remember we had pretty good participation. Do you remember? And you, you were there, weren't you?
Absolutely.
But anyway, so those, yeah.
Ms. Harrod?
Yes, Ms.
This is Vicky Arrington. Um, may I request, if you don't mind, um, what you read off to us. Uh, at the beginning of this discussion?
Absolutely.
What a strategic plan is, if you could send that to us, this board member.
I will.
Thank you. Thank you. Good point, Ms. Arrington.
So, this we have a plan. Dr. Jackson, thank you so much for assisting the Board of Education. We'll move right along unless, unless there's any more comments at all. Okay, so we'll move right along to, oh, Board President's Report. You know, doing my Board President's Report, I would like to. Provide the board with an update on our I A S B resolutions. That we all participated in through our Vice President, Ms. Vicky Arrington. So my report, I would like to allow Ms. Vicky Arrington to tell us a little bit about her resolutions experience. As well as, uh, what we all. You know, voted on and, and she, um, participated on our behalf of, of our district. Go right ahead, Ms.
Thank you very much. And I want to thank each of you as board members for your input that helped to facilitate this for me. I greatly appreciate that. So we met on November fourteenth, this past Saturday. One of the things I want to do is apologize for letting you know. While it was going on, that it was live on Facebook, but I didn't hear that it was on. It was never noted. In the previous meetings leading up to it, I just happened to look up on the corner of my screen. And it had the word Facebook on it. So I quickly sent it out to you. However, that meeting was only thirty-eight minutes, so. Perhaps you wouldn't have had time to get on it. Leading up to that, that meeting, we had two other meetings the delegates did. And, uh, that meeting was to facilitate the discussion that normally takes place in person. At the joint conference. So they were lengthy, one was a fairly lengthy meeting, lot of discussion. One was in the daytime, one was in the evening. I think the evening one was long because it was evening and more participants. So what took place, there were eight new resolutions that were being considered. Three reaffirmations of existing positions and one new, new belief statement. So let me tell you the outcome of those things. I don't know if you want me to read in full the resolution. I know you want this meeting to be an hour. And we're at an hour and a half, so I'll do it as succinct, succinctly as possible. The first, uh, resolution was a loan program. And they were saying be resolved that, that I A S B Board should request the state of Illinois establish a low-cost loan program for public school districts. The program will allow local dollars to flow more, flow more directly to students while providing relief to local tax, taxpayers. Um, I A S B opposed it. It got no appeal, so that motion failed, is not being considered. Number two, gun storage. The greatest level of discussion, if I recall correctly, was on gun storage. And what is that?
Ms. Arrington, did you say the first one failed?
Well, they opposed, first of, um. Yes, the motion failed, it was not being considered as a resolution. Yes, and that's the loan program. And it was the position of I S, I A S B two, or the Resolutions Committee, rather, to not consider that. The second one as well, gun storage. Lot of discussion on this. And that was, um. Be resolved that the I A S B Board shall support and advocate for legislation. Which strengthens child-safe gun storage laws in the state of Illinois. Requiring gun owners to store firearms, whether they are loaded or unloaded. In a securely locked container, if a person under the age of eighteen is likely to gain access to the weapon without permission. Of course, this was appealed, the opposition was appealed. But it failed with a vote of a hundred and eight to forty-six. Lot of discussion and ultimately, they felt we shouldn't be. Uh, involved in what people are doing in their homes in that regard. A lot of interesting discussion from rural areas who are. Who almost on a daily basis, basis handle guns for one reason or another. But anyway, that one failed. The third one was school report card. And it was the position to oppose it. It was also not appealed and not considered, and that one read be it a result. That the I A S B shall support legislation that would direct the Illinois State. Board of Education to prepare and disclose all available school report card data for the current academic year by June first of that year. That was not appealed, it was not being considered. The fourth one, pre-K teacher licensure. That one was appealed, it was a pretty, a lot of discussion on that. Originally, it did fail. Uh, however, uh, they altered the language to, and I don't know what that language ultimately ended up to be. But it, it did end up passing eighty-four percent. Originally, it was the position to oppose it. The fifth resolution was teacher shortage. That motion carried. Uh, teacher shortage and expanding the issuance of provisional teacher licenses to all curricular areas. That was adopted. The sixth resolution, uh, e-learning on Election Day. That motion carried. They agreed to adopt that resolution supporting local decision-making to district e-learning or remote learning days on Election Day. The seventh was local control of pandemic. That motion was carried. It's the regional approach to health emergencies that was recommended and adopted. The eighth one was very similar to the seventh one, so there was no appeal to it. It was not considered. Because it was contained in the seventh. The next three reaffirmation of existing positions relating to Illinois State Authorized Charter Schools. Position Statement one point one six charter schools, the renewal of charters. That motion carried, uh, position statement of the enrollment of at-risk students. That motion carried. And then lastly, state authorized charter school funding, that motion carried. A new belief and believe this was probably a great way to end our discussions on things. The new belief statement, equity, educational equity. The statement holds that I A S B will encourage member districts to integrate the principles of equity. And inclusion in school curriculum, policies, programs, and operations. Ensuring every student is welcomed and supported in a respectful learning environment. Of course, that got passed. And that concludes my report. Hello, you guys still there?
Yes, thank you.
Any questions for Ms. Arrington?
No, thank you for doing that. That, even though it was probably the shortest resolution packet I've ever seen since I've been on the board. But it was power-packed with the things that it had to vote on. So thank you for representing us. I was a little sad about the loan thing not passing. Not that we needed it, but I just thought about districts that may need it, you know, need money, so.
They didn't even have much discussion on that even. It was almost, it, it just didn't go anywhere. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm more so, you know, like I said, we're, thank God, we're in a good financial situation, right? But I thought about.
Very, very blessed district, yes.
Brian, I thought about districts that's not, so. Even though we are, I wanted them to have the opportunity to get money if they don't, especially with. I think of all the stuff that originally at the beginning of this in the spring, Dr. Jackson said we was ordering all this stuff. And I'm like, whoa, my head was swimming with, I think a dollars and cents. I think of safety, but then I think of dollars and cents too. But a lot of districts, they may be struggling, you know, and then of course, there's price, price gouging going on too, you know.
Uh, Graves Lake Community High School District one twenty-seven. Where is that?
Graves Lake is out there by the Navy Base.
Lake County.
Hey, yeah, they, they, uh, proposed this, that no, but no one, um, appealed it. Wow.
Vicky, one thing I wanted to say is that, you know, I think it was what, eight hundred and thirty-six districts in the state of Illinois?
Oh, yeah, I have.
The lowest percentage, is it eight thirty-six, I think? The lowest participation of any delegate assembly.
Yeah, it was, uh, at the height of, of the people logging on. There were two hundred eighty-nine delegates logged on. That was the height. I guess the top number of votes in any one particular, um, resolution was two hundred seventy-eight.
Okay. That's still pretty. I thought, but still, that's, that's still a powerful number for being online. You know, I think it's a hard thing to get everybody online, because generally, it's about four hundred fifty.
Sure, that room is packed, but you know, um, there were some technical issues initially. And I think it could be that some people that may have attempted to log on just didn't for some reason or had some issues. I don't know.
And you know what? We have to think about, too, in Southern Illinois, some parts of Southern Illinois, I know this may surprise you. They're still on dial-up. Remember that?
I'm not familiar with that.
Remember, remember when we first got internet, it was dial-up? They're still on dial-up. They don't have Wi-Fi.
Yeah, let's keep going. We're gonna move along though. Thank you all so much, because we are, we're kind of moving, kind of out of it. So, let's, let's move on, uh, to superintendent's report if that's okay. Thank you all. Right ahead. Dr. Jackson? Dr. Jackson, you there?
Yes, I am. And so our board, I'm sorry, my superintendent's report. Board goal three programs and services. This is our Lindop Student Outreach Committee. And I know I mentioned them before, uh, they had come in and they were, we were having a discussion about. What's happening with COVID, how, uh, we might be thinking about possibly bringing them back into school. And then just sharing some information about some of the ideas that they had with, uh, working with the other children. And just providing some hope and positivity. Mr. Kenobi and Dr. Spalding, um, sort of lead this group and work with them, and, uh, they are absolutely amazing. Next slide. Next, we're go three programs and services, our after-school, uh, programming. The administration was charged with coming up with some different ways, uh, of teaching and learning. And so not just saying, can you sign up, uh, to do some study island work? Or can you sign up for a reading class or a math class? They had to become, uh, very creative. And one of the things that they did was to, um, come up with a cooking class, a healthy cooking class. And I was thinking how we might be able to make that a little more exciting with having a celebrity chef. And so I reached out on LinkedIn to Chef Robert Stewart to ask him if he would not mind, um, helping us. I had done a little bit of research and he has, uh, some trend, he is the owner of Transition Kitchen. And it provides a free program, uh, for children and teaching them how to cook and providing some exposure. Next. And it's not just about, uh, Chef Stewart, because he is just, uh, really the topping to this. Mr. Selly, as well as Dr. Kay, uh, came up with this idea of healthy cooking. They wanted to do something innovative. They talked about how they were going to incorporate math and science and all of the programming, um, is. Absolutely personalized for each child. So they've all been very intentional about creating the programs, and it's not just about, we're gonna have fun cooking. But it's about meeting the needs of the individual children. And so I look forward to bringing you more information about this. But here's a little bit about, uh, Chef Robert Stewart, if you do not know him. So as you see, was the winner of, uh, Cutthroat Kitchen. Uh, we did have an opportunity to speak with him, the, uh, teachers. Uh, as well as this, his vice president of his company. We are also looking into having a. A permission slip for, uh, the children with their parents and what they would need to have for this program. But we are excited about it, and as soon as we get things together for implementation, we will come back and share some more. Next slide. Happy Board Members' Day. Thank a board member. Do not desire to fit in, desire to oblige yourselves to lead, Wendell and Brooks. Tonight, we would like to honor Carla Joyner-Harratt, our board president. Thank you, Mrs. Harratt.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson.
Mrs. Victoria Arrington, our board vice president. Thank you, Mrs. Arrington.
Pleasure. Thank you.
Ms. Cheryl Griffin, Board Secretary. Thank you, Mrs. Griffin. Board Member Brian Dawson. Mr. Dawson, we appreciate you. Thank you. Mr. Aaron Hannah. Thank you, Mr. Hannah. We certainly appreciate you and your contributions to the board. Tanya Taylor, Board Member. Thank you, Mrs. Taylor.
Thank you.
This is Penny Williams-Wolffert, Board Member. Ms. Wolfert, we appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so congratulations. Thank you all for serving and going above and beyond always, for always, uh, keeping the children. At the forefront of every decision that you make. Thank you for your leadership, your guidance, uh, your patience. Uh, your perseverance and just your overall commitment to excellence. So thank you very much. Uh, next, and we have more programs and services. We have our P T S O pumpkin carving contest, which happened. And these are just some photos of the, uh, children that entered the contest. Thank you, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Dr. Jackson. And thank you for the surprise delivery on behalf of the Board. Thank you so much.
No problem, my pleasure.
I appreciate it.
Okay, start with committee reports. Uh, we did not have a finance committee meeting, uh, this month. Our next meeting is Thursday, December tenth, twenty twenty at ten o'clock AM. Our Personnel Committee meeting, it, the next meeting is to be determined. The Pace Governing Board meeting. I know the next meeting is November nineteenth, but Mr. Dawson, were you able to give a report last?
Yes, just, just quickly, um, obviously, uh, Pace is also, uh, fully remote as well. And I, I believe, uh, Nurse James even said that, you know, the, the office is completely remote at this time as well. Uh, there is no anticipation of them going back before, uh, the spring.
Mr. Dawson, was the school, eh, did, did the school ever have anybody in-house, this particular?
No, no, not as far as school, um, children, but, you know, um, staff and administrators. There were teachers who were teaching from their classroom, but there were never any, uh, students, no.
Okay. Thank you. The Safety S E L Committee, Ms. Williams-Wolfer and Mr. Hannah, that next meeting date is to be determined. The Policy Committee meeting, Ms. Williams-Wolfer and Mr. Dawson. Um, I'm not sure what your last meeting is, but your next meeting is Wednesday, December second, twenty twenty? That's coming up very soon.
Yeah, uh, yes, we, uh, decided to wait on the November meeting because, sorry, uh, we weren't sure exactly what was gonna happen, if there would be a lot of, um, things coming out after the election. I mean, it's, it's kind of funny, but, um, yeah, uh, the next meeting is, uh, upcoming, but we actually voted in the consent agenda, I believe, uh, on that, the most recent press plus. Uh, Penny, did you want to add something to that?
Nope, you covered it all.
Thank you. Here's the Para C I A Committee meeting. That was Monday, October twenty-sixth, nine AM. I guess you've already had that. Did you give a, is there a, a report on that? Ms. Griffin?
Well, we went over, we basically just went over some of the things that were taking place. I didn't have, uh, very much over it, just going over what the teachers were, uh, compiling. Dr. Jackson, can you give more depth on that?
Yes, and so, actually, we were giving her an overview on, uh, our progress as far as it goes with Para, what the process is and how it looks. We have not made any, um, determinations as of yet. Uh, as you know, um, evaluation has been a hot topic at the state level and how to implement that. So these are conversations that we are currently having. Uh, and also, as a, you know, as a collective unit with administration, teachers, as well as union being a part of that. Uh, so we just gave her an overview of that information, and we will have something that will be forthcoming soon.
Is there a way you can share that information in the Friday Report?
Absolutely.
Thank you. And since you brought it up, I'm kind of curious as to how are the evaluations working? Have, um, the district and the, um, union come to a consensus in terms of how that will be handled this year? Because I know each district is handling it differently.
Yes, and so we're still in discussion about that now.
Okay, understandable.
Yeah, we are, thank you. That's, that, that is, uh, not just a hot topic for Lundop, but it is, you know, really across, um, the state and even in some, uh, other areas of the country. Uh, superintendents are having meetings all of the time, just trying to really figure this out. And I think every, uh, partner wants everything to come out well for both sides, and so we want the children to learn. But we also want to make sure that we are providing the resources, um, that our teachers need, and what we have at Lundop are group of people who understand, uh, what needs to be done. We may not always agree, uh, the means, but we always agree uh, about the end, and that's what's important, keeping the main thing the main thing.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Technology Committee meeting, Ms. Taylor and Mr. Hannah, that was today.
Yes, good evening. This is, uh, Board Member Tanya Taylor. We did have a meeting, um, this evening. It was just an update on E-Rate for twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two, where we're going as far as the district. And then also, there was a discussion on the administrative procedures. Um, but again, Dr. Jackson can chime in if she wants to give more detail. And maybe a good suggestion would also put something in the Friday's Report for the other Board, uh, members to review. Thank you.
Great. Do you think we need anything else? Uh, Mr. Ellis, you on that technology report? I think she summed it up pretty well.
We just talked about the Student Allied Personal Protection Act, which is what Ms. Taylor mentioned, which is required to be brought through the Technology Committee.
Thank you. Is additional information in the Friday Report?
Yeah, I do have a question. I, I know that you all talked about E-Rate. Has E-Rate been impacted significantly by COVID or by any funding? Has it been decreased or impacted at all? Mr. Lesku or Ms. Taylor?
E-Rate, E-Rate's funded through, um, taxes, or it's like, or taxes on your phone bill, so that-
Okay.
Money, so that's, hasn't really affected it. E-Rate's still going smooth. I haven't heard of any cuts or anything like that, so.
Okay, wonderful. It's good to hear, that's good money coming through. Um, the Technology Committee, their next meeting is January nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. Community Engagement Committee, um, next meeting is tabled into further notice, as well as the Negotiations Committee meeting. Last but not least, public comments. Are there any public comments, Ms. Suarez?
No, ma'am.
Okey-dokey. So, I need a motion to adjourn our meeting at, at six-thirty. I'm just kidding, at seven-twenty-seven PM.
I make a motion that we adjourn the meeting at seven-twenty-seven PM.
In a second, please. Cheryl Griffin, in a second. As we do a roll call, Ms. Suarez.
Board Member Williams-Wolfer.
Yay.
Board Member Joanna Harris.
Yay.
Board Member Arrington.
Yay.
Board Member Griffin.
Yay.
Board Member Dawson.
Yay.
Board Member Hannah.
Yay.
Board Member Taylor.
Yay.
Thank you.
Have a great day, everybody. Great evening. Also, we still have enough time to have a great evening. Thank you, everybody.
Good night, thank you.
Be safe, everyone.
Night, all.
Yeah, be safe, yes.
Be safe and enjoy yourself.
Yes.
Careful and careful.